I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Allen? John? John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
And Al?
Here.
Jesse here?
Jesse?
I'm sorry. Jesse contacted me just a few minutes ago, so he'd be unable to make the meeting.
Noel?
Here.
And Joshua?
Here.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized to have the daytime in place thereof, since the record, Town News and/or Starledge newspaper. The constituent borough parks and borough libraries as well as posting in the school districts, principal's, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violating will be subject to fine not to exceed $100.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student's to reach his, her, their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you, Stephanie. This segment of the meeting is for public comments on agenda items only. And as always, there will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on any other Riverdale business. And Mark will facilitate if we have any public comments or questions on agenda items only at this point in time. Mark?
Any comments or questions, please raise your hand.
Okay. Nothing more, correct? Okay. We're going to go into tonight's presentation. Tom Bonfiglio, the Business Administrator, will give a presentation on next year's budget. This will be Tom's last presentation at Riverdale. And he left.
Elvis has left the building.
Remus Earl.
Hello, welcome to Riverdale 2021-22 presentation with Tom Bonfiglio, and I'm the Business Administrator for Riverdale Regional. March 15th, we presented the current budgets to the Board of Education and the public, which at that point in time, it was sent to the county office with no to review.
Oh, my share of that.
There was no revisions. And now it is the final presentation for the 2021-22 school year. We talked about the procedure, how it starts in September, and now culminates in April. So there's a long process. It is zero-based, and the final product, you will see how it comes around. We looked at the enrollment and that is our school plus. No, 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 no. That's our school plus preparing our children to come to school with 1,596 children here at Riverdale as of October 15th. As you can see from this slide, over the past 15 years, the population of our resident children has ebbed and flowed, and we're looking at a resident enrollment for approximately 1,600 children going forward. State aid. As you can see, as you can see, over the past several years, the amount of state aid has also changed. And from the 2010-2011 school year to the 2021-22 school year, it is the most we have had in the past six seconds.
This is move this way. You've got to move towards the, towards the, because you're standing where I wonder who there. Oh, now you're perfect. Thank you.
All we've tried to do is show you over the past six years where the majority of the expenses have been, and with most school districts and companies, it's in salaries and benefits, in which we're looking at a stable salary and benefit line that has culminated over the past several years, orange and light green. So approximately 78% of our salary of our budget is comprised of salary and benefits. Going into the 2021-22, we have seven retirements, which is the most that we've seen in a long time. Usually it's about three or four, but seven is, seven is a big number. Capital projects. We had two, two capital projects. One is distributing us a little at the high school and one at the middle school. And we have gotten bids in, and it is budget friendly. What's going on with our budget is that current expenses, $34,833 is the standard expense capital outlay, which includes $60,287 that we have to give back to the state for our school development authority, debt service with a little asterisk, I'll explain that in a second, and our grants, we're anticipating approximately $451,000. Our total budget is a little more than $37 million. Going forward, we have three years remaining on our current debt service. And because we refinance, we're not asking for the taxpayers for a savings of $343,185. What you see here is for the past five years, the municipal shares of breakdown of taxes between our number of region. And it, the percent shares, what we commonly call it, has stayed steady over the past two years, and primarily because we haven't had a reevaluation by each one of ours. For going into the 2021-22 school year, we're looking for an annual increase in our dividend of $87 and for our age of $51. The Board of Education chose not to go through the 2% cap, and the overall tax increase is 1.4%. And that's all, folks. Okay? It's supposed to be literally. I would love to say, as Doug normally points out, that this was all being technolized, but you know that. Okay? Mark helped substantially, and thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, thank you, Tom. And to the members of the public, we did have some technical difficulties with our broadcast, so we will post this to our, the presentation to our website tomorrow.
Thank you, Patrick. Let's get into the student member report. Noel, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, so I think the seniors have a lot of fun, like events coming up. Mr. Pepe emailed us about them this week, so I think we always want to thank him and everyone that organized it for being able to do all this stuff for us at the end of the year, in addition to being able to go in every day if we want to.
Very good. Josh?
Yeah, I would agree with Noel. I think today was the first day that many of the senior class got to. It's the first day that they're like, oh, welcome back. I know, just personally, I think in my classes, the people in person have increased, and while I'm not going to be in person until after my AP exams, I think I'm really excited by the prospect that I can do that finally and go every day and be with my classmates unlike before. And also, I think the senior class is very happy about that, and I know a lot of the senior class is also looking forward to getting over with AP exams, so next week and the following week, and one day the week after. And after that, I think, I think enrollment will increase based on what I've amassed with my friends, and I think it's a very exciting time for the seniors.
Thank you. I'm going to feed off of both of what you both just said, because I do have a list of some of the year-end events that Mr. Pepe put together, and I think it's worth repeating. There are quite a few on here, so just bear with me for a second, because I think this is very important in these troubling times, that we try to make it as normal as possible. A lot of these events can change based on CDC guidelines and Governor Murphy's executive orders, as they did bring forward some items today. So I'm just going to rip through a couple of these dates that Brian has listed. We have May 14th, the junior class event in the courtyard. May 18th, the senior barbecue. May 20, '21 and '22 is the school musical, Mamma Mia. Then we have June 1, the spring concert in the stadium field. June 1, also sophomore fun day. And then June 3, we have the senior awards during the day and the senior scholarship night. Those will be live-streamed events. June 4, Triumph Benefit Concert in the Oval. June 8, the Honors Society, which is also a pre-recorded presentation. June 10, the senior class event at 7:00 in the courtyard, subject to change. June 15, pop night music concert in the courtyard. June 18, the senior class field day. June 21, the senior brunch and yearbook signing. And June 23, commencement practice, cap and gown distribution, and commencement practice on June 24 with the commencement at 5:00 PM. And again, a lot of this is still up in the air as far as how many people can attend. So as you can see, Brian did put together, along with the administration, a jam-packed last two months of the school year. Thank you to the administration and Brian for that. So I'm going to pass it along to Mr. Fletcher at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Graff. I'm just sorry. I dropped my screen for a second. I apologize. So I have a couple of items that I'd like to discuss with everyone and provide some information. So as both Nicole and Josh had mentioned, today was the first day of inviting seniors back for five-day-a-week instruction. They, there were 66 seniors in the building today. The last, last Thursday, which was the last day that this cohort would have been in, there were 17 seniors. So it was a pretty good increase. I'm very pleased about that. However, this is one aspect of a larger picture. If I could remind everybody, we discussed this back in February, that we would have an approach to bringing back students for more frequency in instruction. That included a stratified approach at first, where we would address all of our special education students. We would address all our students who were struggling learners, all of our students who were 504s. And we also have a program that we run through Title I, which is where we also provided support for those students. So we surveyed those students, and then, once we had that process moving forward, we then began to look at how to bring regular, if you will, general education students back. So prior to the April break, Mr. Pepe surveyed the senior class. We're going to wait a couple of days to see how it settles down, then we'll be surveying the junior class with the same effort to try to bring juniors and sophomores and freshmen back and see where we are as far as our capacities are concerned at the high school. Today is the day that we brought back our struggling learners at the middle school. We've always had a larger cohort at the middle school, so our balance is a little bit more delicate. Pardon me, it's making sure that we have the proper balance of students in the classrooms. So we will be then, I think, surveying next week the 8th grade to bring them back and see where we end up with there. I do anticipate that there will be more middle school students that will opt to try to come back, so we have to be cognizant of our social distancing and the building capacities, et cetera. So this is the plan that we've been working with since February. It seems to be working well. I'm hopeful that we will have more and more students attend as we go forward. This also then continues to talk, or continues to beg the question about what we're going to be doing as we move forward for the planning for next school year. We are, we are planning for full instruction. We have been analyzing the schedules to determine the best way to provide lunch, because I think that's our biggest choke point, if you will, where we would have the highest concentration of students in one area. This, of course, is all being based upon current guidance that we, that we have. We do anticipate having full instruction for students next year. However, we need to be cognizant of that the guidelines can change, and I'm pretty, I am pretty certain that at some point or another, even though the governor had indicated that he would not be providing a virtual instruction platform, I think that will return. So we need to be prepared to deal with that, because it certainly can't go in the way that it's been going on right now. I have been fortunate to be asked to be part of this, one of the state committees that's looking at this, so I hopefully will receive some further information quicker, if you will, regarding what's going to be coming down the pike. I do anticipate that we will have to have another plan like we did at the beginning of this year. I do anticipate that there will be, pardon me, further guidance that will come regarding quarantining and fully vaccinated students and fully vaccinated staff. I think that will continue to evolve, which we will have to be cognizant of. However, what it doesn't do is it doesn't allow us to be very responsive when, as an example, today, the governor made an announcement where he was going to be raising outdoor capacity limitations and indoor capacity limitations. And we have not seen anything in writing yet. We did get, all school districts got an emergency broadcast from the commissioner's office saying that this was announced and that guidance will be forthcoming. And it's, pardon me, while you do have those capacity limitations, it doesn't mean that every school will have the same flexibility as others. As an example, if we raise the limitations to 500, as an example, and we have a class of 275, the minute you, the minute you invite one person to come with that family, you've already exceeded the limitations. So we need to be cognizant of those changes. We need to be able to be responsive to it. There, of course, is going to be a lot of talk about whether the prom can go forward or whether a graduation can go forward, those kinds of things. Once we get the guidance that's, that was hinted at today, we'll be able to allow us to make some further decisions as we go down the pike. As I've indicated to the board, you know, we pay attention to that. We will stay with that. We will do everything that we can. And as indicated already by Josh and Noel with the communication from Mr. Pepe, we're trying to, you know, return to some form of opportunity for a more normal close to this school year than we did in the past. So we need to be aware of that, cognizant of it, and recognize that that guidance comes when it comes, and the social media and the announcements that get made don't have all of the detail that's in them. We're waiting to see what, what governor really meant today. So having said that, I just want to point out to the board that on your March 1st minutes that you have, executive and regular, if you compare the agenda that you had to the minutes, please note that we inadvertently put February, when you first had the agenda, for the financial resolutions, when in fact they were related to the month of January, and that has been corrected in the minutes here of March 1st. So if you look at the minutes from March 29th, that has the February properly listed in there. So having said all of that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Let's get to the committee reports. I know a couple of committees did meet. Budget and finance.
Noel, we haven't met, but that's because we've, the presentation that Tom had, which is actually being voted on this evening.
Okay. Where's Doug? Oh, there it is. Okay, Doug, facilities and security?
We did meet last week. We discussed upcoming capital projects for the summer, which will involve the security vestibules, and we reviewed the overall security report from our vendor that Tom had brought in. And he's going back to them with some questions that the committee had regarding their proposal. But overall, we are looking to have both the security vestibules and all of the security systems on the perimeter doors up and running before the school year next year.
Okay. Community relations and technology. John?
No meeting since last time we reported.
Okay. Curriculum?
Yes, we have a meeting coming up this upcoming May 3rd, and Pat and I, I guess, will chat about the agenda maybe after tonight's meeting.
Okay. Policy and governance.
I'm speaking from Claudia's computer. Mine died. And we also have a meeting coming up on Monday, but you will notice we are at the second readings of some new policies and a redo of policy. So we, when we get to that section of the agenda, it will be open for public comments if anybody has any, wants to add anything at that time as related to the policies.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the committee reports. I'm going to jump right into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for consent?
I'll make a motion. It's Claudia.
I'll second. It's Doug.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? No? Okay. Tom, are you ready, please?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And?
Yes. Okay, our first vote is going to be under B. Resignations and retirements, number one. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of job coach, Dorothea Welch, effective June 30th, 2021.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Stephanie.
Tom, are you ready?
It's just before Tom calls the roll. As, as we've done each time when we have a retirement, I make mention of the fact that we will be honoring all of our retirees at our first meeting in June. So we, we wish Dottie well in her moving on. Both she and her husband are moving on to another, to another phase of their life. So congratulations.
Very good. Tom?
Claudia? Yes, and I wish her well.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, and we thank her for all she did for all the students that she encountered all of her years here, the support she gave them.
And Al?
Yes. Congratulations. Okay, the second vote, under E. Appointments, number one. Whereas the Riverdale Board of Education desires to appoint Gertrude, aka Trudy Engel, as school business administrator/ Board Secretary for the Riverdale School District. Employment agreement has been submitted to and approved by the Executive County Superintendent. The Board hereby appoints Gertrude Engel as the school BBA Board Secretary for the Riverdale School District for the period beginning July 1, 2021, and expiring on June 30th, 2022, in accordance with the terms of the employment agreement annexed hereto and incorporated herein by reference. And the Board hereby authorizes the Board President and Superintendent to execute the employment agreement on behalf of the Board. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second. I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, Joe, have it. Thank you. And Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, and looking forward to our first finance meeting with Trudy when she comes on board in the summertime, because I know she's on the meeting. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, and I just wanted to point out for people who are unfamiliar that this role always has a yearly contract. So for anybody who's looking at this and is familiar, we hope we have a long, long relationship with Trudy, and, and the dates on it are not an indication of that in any way. So, yes. Remember, I said.
That's a very good point.
Thank you.
And, and Al?
Yes, and welcome back to Riverdale. Okay, the third.
So just again, as we go, I'd like to welcome Trudy as to return to Riverdale. We say that because Trudy started working with us in the finance office before she moved on to various other positions, including her current position as the Business Official in Hawthorne. So welcome aboard, Trudy. It's also a bittersweet moment, as we have teased Tom, and will continue to tease Tom for the four more meetings, I think, in his. Position is available because Tom Bonfiglio is retiring from our school district after 25 years of service. So we want to, once again, thank Tom for all his time and effort. Again, we will recognize his retirement in June, and there'll be a roast that will be
Is in every meeting a roast? I cannot wait.
So welcome aboard, Trudy.
Okay. The third vote is number 12, miscellaneous. A. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board approve the second reading of the following policies. Under the 3,000 series, 3514.1, school furniture electronic device distribution and use, and under the 5,000 series, 5132, dress and grooming, 5141.5, mental health and emotional well-being, 5141.7, social and emotional learning and character education. 5141.7, Social and Emotional Learning and Character Education. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's Stephanie.
And I'll second, it's Claudia.
Okay, and then we will open this up to the public or anyone else might have any comments on any of these policies, since it is the second reading. Mark, do you see anything out there?
Nothing.
Okay. Anybody have any questions here? Okay, Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Tracy Allen? Tracy Allen?
Yes, sorry, trouble on.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes. Okay, the fourth vote, again, under number 12, Miscellaneous. B, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the selection of the following professional staff members as Riverdale's 2021 Bergen County Teacher Educational Services Professional Recognition Program recipients. Linda McCulca, Middle School, and Alga Sagliczek in the High School.
Right, I'm sorry, it's McCulca.
McCulca, sorry. McCulca in the Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
It's Claudia, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Doug, I'll second.
Okay. Maybe Patrick can shed a little light on this program?
Certainly. We, Riverdale School District participates in the Teacher of the Year program, which was started, I don't know, maybe 25 years ago by the then-governor.
Corzine?
No, it was even before him. And anyway, each school district gets to have a process where you select a Teacher of the Year by building. Once that's done, we submit the names upward, and they can be chosen as county educator and then go into a state competition as we go forward. So one of the happy moments that I get is I go around and meet with these teachers individually. I try to catch them in a class, and I present them with their certificate, because I think it's also a wonderful opportunity for our students to see that these people are recognized by their peers, because it's a committee of their peers that selects them based upon their service to the community. We couldn't have two finer people being selected this year. And again, because of COVID, should the program not move forward at the end of this school year, which is possible, that it wouldn't, we would just hold this over to next year so that they would be honored in next year's program.
Okay, thank you. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes. Okay, the next vote is under 13, Finance and District Operations. Letter H, the superintendent, at the request of the Board Secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending March 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Joe, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
And Alan?
Yes. Okay, the next vote is again, under 13, Finance and District Operations, letter K. And this is the budget pertaining to Tom's presentation from tonight. Be it resolved to approve the school district's final budget for the fiscal year 2021/2022 school year for submission to the Executive County Superintendent's Office as follows. A tax levy of $32,61783, with total all expenses of $37,066056. May I have a motion, please?
This is Joe, I'll make that motion.
This is Alan, I'll second.
Does anybody have any questions on the budget?
I'm just going to comment again that it's under the 2%. It's at 1.6. And as Tom laid out as well, that all programs, and all two, are still intact. No cuts.
Great point, thanks, Joe. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes, and Tom, it was a good way to go out for you, a good budget.
Thank you.
Alan?
You will lead it.
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, and thanks, Tom.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, and you got to answer all my questions in the process and not after you were all done. So weren't you happy I was on? Did you hear him chuckle, right?
Take the pain after or before? He retired in anticipation?
That was a going-away present.
And Alan?
Yes, and thank you very much for your service to Riverdale. Okay, that leads us into old business, new business. Forward discussion.
This is Stephanie, and I just wanted to comment that, as I do pretty much every time we send one out, that I'm still incredibly proud of the fact that we still send out an actual newsletter to all of the residents at their home, that even when there's lots of things you can get online and there's lots of feeds you can subscribe to, there are people that don't do those things. And I think it's really important and special that we share it. And this one was chock full of really great information, including the escape room lessons that were really interesting and some of the, there was some funding that was going on in projects that some of the students were doing. So if you have one at home and you haven't read it yet, I encourage you to do so. I've highlighted our soliditorian and our valedictorian, but I appreciate that Patrick and the administration still goes through that process and all of the staff that puts it together in such a nice little package, because Pat writes it in Word and then it comes out in this glorious-looking package.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll hop into public comments. This is a segment for the public to comment on anything pertaining to Riverdale School District. And Mark will facilitate this part of the meeting. If there are any comments or questions, I see a hand raised.
Yes, we have Daniela Bosco, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniela Bosco. I have a middle school son. I just wanted to thank you for your transparency, but I also wanted to just respond to that. In full transparency, my son attended school today, and he had three people in his classes, in three of his classes. And his largest class contained six people. Last week, he went to school, he had five people in his class. So I do know that, from what I hear, I know that it fluctuates from week to week, from class to class and grade to grade. I am puzzled by what I hear, that the middle school has more people attending, because that's not what we're seeing in my son's grade or in his classes. So I just wanted to point that out. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Mark, anything else?
And next we have Sebastian Muscarella, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. This is my first Riverdale Board meeting. I've been joining many of the Roosevelt and Charity Hill Board meetings as both of my kids are in that grade school. But I have my oldest son moving up to Riverdale next year, he'll be in 7th grade. And it was really great to hear the report at the beginning, Mr. Fletcher, on the expectation that the kids will be back full-time, full instruction next year. I really hope that goes off without a hitch. But my question was about the virtual option. And while Mr. Murphy maybe has not put something in writing, he has been pretty adamant, at least in the media, about not having a virtual option next year. And he has not been one to revert on his comments. So I was a little curious to understand why you think there is going to be a virtual option when Murphy's been pretty adamant about it not happening.
Because at the same time, thank you, by the way, for your comments. And I am aware that you've been having some communication with Mr. Bonfigli. I appreciate that. At the same time that the governor announced that he was, that we would have full-time instruction for next year, he, the next day, he qualified his statement as saying that there may be a virtual option for students who have health issues, as well as staff members that may have health issues. So I believe that that process will continue to expand. I remain, and of course, I think it will all depend on the status of the, of the public health crisis at that time. But I want to say further that if there's a virtual option, it can't be the way it was this year, because that impacted the students who were in the classroom as well as those who stayed home. We'd have to do it in a different way. I suspect it'll be a smaller number of students that would participate in it. But at the same time, there have been a number of students that have actually thrived in this environment. And as I've seen over the, over the years with the, with our elected leadership, things change. So I think we have to be ready to plan for both ways. But I expect, I should say, I expect the vast majority of students to be in person five days a week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I guess we'll just move into adjournment then. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's Claudia, I'll make that motion.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll say.
Alan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 8:44.